We would like to welcome everyone to tonight's board meeting. It is December 18th at 7:30 and welcome everyone and we want to wish everyone the happiest of holiday seasons and Merry Christmas. This is one of my favorite times of the year and we really appreciate you taking the time to be with us tonight because I know, I know at least the moms, but I know everybody's got a lot to do and a lot to get ready for next week. At my house, we do, so. Anyway, do I hear a motion to adjourn executive session and begin open session?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Still have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there any discussion regarding the adjournment? Hearing none, we'll take a favor, all, take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. I would like to formally call to order the general session. I would like to notify you that the district is in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act by notifying the media of the date, time, and place of the meeting. We also want to notify you that the district tapes this meeting for accuracy in preparing the minutes. And at this time, I'd like to call on Dr. Brent Powers to give us our indication. Dr. Powers?
So, one of our previous board members, Ed Harmon, was a mentor to a lot of us and I remember when I first came on the board, he mentored me greatly. And one of the things he spoke to is the importance of us as a board functioning as a unit. So with that, I would like to offer this prayer and it's based upon Paul's letter to the church in Corinth. And this is from the message in chapter 12, verse 12, he says, "Your body has many parts, limbs, organs, and cells, but no matter how many parts you name, you're still one body." And then verse 14, he shifts to, "I want you to think about how all that makes you more significant, not less. A body isn't just a single part blown up into something huge. It's all the different but similar parts arranged and functioning together." And then verse 19, he goes on and says, "But I also want you to think about how this keeps your significance from getting blown up into self-importance. For no matter how significant you are, it is only because of what you are part of. An enormous eye or a gigantic hand wouldn't be a body, rather a distraction. What we have is one body with many parts, each its proper size and in its proper place. No part is important on its own." So with that, let us pray. Bow your heads. Lord, I want to thank you for assembling this board to support Lexington One's vision of empowering each child to design the future. We ask that you challenge each of us daily to cultivate a caring community where all learners are extraordinary communicators, collaborators, creators, and critical thinkers. Butcher us our deliberations as well as our actions in an environment of mutual respect. Place your guiding hand on each of us and nudge us back into the fold when needed. Remind us that we cannot run this race by ourselves. Even though we can do our part of an assigned task alone, the greatest results can only be achieved as a team. Help us adjust our daily thinking such that we are working as a team. Keep us focused on our part as a board, creating, revising, and updating policy, providing Dr. Little feedback from our constituents, maintaining a sustainable funding model for public education, and advocating for public education with our elective leaders. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Powers. I would like to remind you that we did hold an election in November and tonight, we are welcoming once again our three new board members, Dr. Guyton, Ms. Garris, and Mr. Oswald, and we welcome all of you to the board. And as part of our policy procedures, whenever we have a general election, which we held in November, we reelect officers the following that election. So tonight, we are going to turn it over to our superintendent, who will conduct the board elections. And at this point, we will elect a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. Dr. Little?
Thank you, madam. Vice chair. So at this time, I would like to take nominations for the chairperson of the Lexington County School District One Board of Trustees. They are now open.
I would like to nominate Mrs. Cynthia Smith to be the chairwoman for the Board of Trustees for Lexington School District One.
Mrs. Smith has been nominated. Are there further nominations for the office of chairperson?
I would like to nominate Ms. Ann Marie Green.
Mrs. Green has been nominated. Are there any further nominations for the office of chairperson? Hearing none, then the nominations are closed?
I would like to decline that nomination, please.
Okay. All right, so it has been moved that Cynthia Smith be elected chairperson of the board. All those in favor? I think we need to vote by maybe showing a hands? Okay, all those opposed, that looked like unanimous. Then I now turn it over to our new board chair to complete the nominations of vice chair and secretary. So congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Little. You did a great job. Thank you. And thank you, board, for your faith and your nomination. I appreciate the support and I promise I will do everything in my power to support the students and the employees of Lexington One. At this time, the chair will accept nominations for the position of vice chair of the Lexington County School District One Board of Trustees. Those nominations are currently open. Do I have any nominations for vice chair?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept Ms. Ann Marie Green as our vice chair.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. I'm, let's see, I now take a vote, all in favor of Ms. Ann Marie Green as vice chair. Please raise your hand. Any opposed? The motion is, the vote is unanimous and congratulations, Ms. Green. You're now vice chair. Now, we have election of secretary. At this time, the chair will accept nominations for the positions of secretary of the Lexington County School District One Board of Trustees and the nominations are now open. Do I have any nominations for secretary?
Madam Chair, I would like to move that we nominate Dr. Brent Powers for secretary of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any other nominations for secretary? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. I'd like to take a vote for the position of secretary. Dr. Powers has been nominated, all in favor of Dr. Powers as secretary. Please raise your hand. Raise your hand.
He didn't know either.
Any opposed? The motion carries and congratulations, Secretary Powers. So we now have a slate of officers, so thank you. Does anybody want to say anything? Okay. Well, that was fast. Okay, now we're going to go to item 6.0, which is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Green and motion from Dr. Powers. Any discussion, board? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. Board, in front of you, you have the minutes of two separate meetings and this is a little awkward because part of this was a transition, some of the board members were not on the board at this time, but we are going to ask this board to vote on these minutes. You have minutes from the November 13th, 2018, meeting and you have minutes from the December 4th, 2018, meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of these two meetings? Hearing none, the minutes will be accepted and received. Board, we're now going to go to 8.0, which is reports and action items from executive session. Do I hear a motion to approve 10 certified recommendations for the 2018-2019 school year?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept Dr. Little and leadership teams' recommendations for the 10 certified positions for the 2018-2019 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Board, are there any questions, comments, or discussion regarding those 10 positions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. Do I hear a motion to approve two certified recommend, and I want to say to the audience, we are on the ball up here. This is human resources at work. This is for 2019-2020 school year, so they're real, they're already hiring. So do I hear a motion to approve two certified recommendations for the 2019-2020 school year?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept Dr. Little and administrative teams' recommendations for the two certified positions for the 2019-2020 school year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Still have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions or comments, board? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. There was discussion in executive session regarding proposed property contractual arrangements for the purchase of New Gilbert Attendants Area Elementary School property. Do I hear a motion regarding the proposed contractual arrangement for the purchase of New Gilbert Attendants Area Elementary School property?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the purchase of a piece of property per an agreement dated February 28th, 2018, with Joshua Brad Shuck and Mary P. Price as guardian of Mary Ruth Summer Oxendine. The property known by Lexington County as TMS number 00510003060. The consideration for this property is $125,000.
Thank you, Mrs. Green, for that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there any, are any discussion or questions, board? Or maybe Mr. Salters could give us a little more information about this property purchase?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this piece of property is located adjacent to the property purchased in September of 2017, related to the New Gilbert Area Elementary School site. We're referencing that school as Elementary Number 17 in our building plan. And it completes the road frontage for that property. It's a small parcel in the, in the front of a larger tract, completes the road frontage in that area. It allows us to orient the school and all of the drive accesses onto Highway One.
That's great. Okay, any other questions or comments, board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, all in favor of the purchase of the Gilbert Attendants Area Elementary School property, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you. We have six in favor and one opposed, please record that. And the motion carries. We have discussion of, in also in executive, excuse me, in executive, I can't even talk, in executive session, we had a discussion of proposed property contractual arrangements for the purchase of future school sites for the following schools. An elementary school in the Newtown area of Lexington, a new Whitenall area elementary school, and the property for the relocation of Lexington Middle School. Let's see. No action is required as a result of this discussion. And I would like to clarify that Dr. Kyle Guyton did recuse himself from the discussion for the recusal of the Lexington Middle School relocation property and I would like for that to be part of the record. So there were no action items at that time, it was information only. At this time, we're going to go to 9.0, which is honors and achievements, and Dr. Little will step down and present certificates. Honorees, this is the most exciting part of the board meeting, so honorees, when we call your names, come stand with Dr. Little. We celebrate successes of many kinds during the honors and achievements portion of our monthly board meeting. We recognize students who have won first, second, or third place national level awards and first place state level awards. The significant achievements of our employees and the contributions of our business partners and community organizations. Tonight's honorees include a Russian Scholar Laureate, volleyball all-stars, multiple grant award winners, and award-winning yearbook staffs, just to name a few. We feature all of our honorees in a newsletter called Proof Positive, it's like this. If you did not pick one up when you signed in tonight, please do so on your way out. Proof Positive makes a great keepsake for our honorees and for their families and you are welcome to take an extra copy home if, for family members who could not attend tonight. Audience, you need to know that we will recognize our honorees in a different order than you see in Proof Positive. If you try to follow along in the newsletter, you may need to skip back and forth from page to page. Excuse me. And finally, we ask that you please stay until we finish recognizing all of tonight's award recipients and I promise, at that time, we will take a short break and let you slide out and make those Christmas cookies and decorate those trees and wrap those presents.
Or you could stay.
Or yes, or you can stay with us. In order to accommodate our youngest honorees and their families, once we finish the awards program, we will allow you to slip out. Already said that, sorry about that. So, we're going to start with our American Council of Teachers of Russian Scholar Laureates. We start tonight with Lexington High School senior Paul Kim. Is Paul here? Well, let me tell you about Paul and I, let me just go ahead and show you. He's our, he's the front page of our little Proof Positives. There he is. In recognition of his outstanding comprehension of the Russian language, Paul now holds the title of Russian Scholar Laureate. This recognition comes from the American Council of Teachers of Russian after teachers nominate their outstanding students of Russian. Paul won two gold medals last year for his Russian language proficiency. First in the National Russian Essay Contest, followed by a second medal at the Actor Olympiada of Spoken Russian. Congratulations, Paul, on this latest achievement. Each year about this time, we recognize fall sports. First, let's bring up three North-South Football All-Stars. Darius Bell and Jacob Burgess from Gilbert High. Are Darius and Jacob here? Oh, great, come on down. And George Storm from Pillion High School. There's George. In recognition of their outstanding season play, these athletes received invitations to the annual North-South All-Star Game. For Gilbert High School football, Darius finished the year with 96 tackles, eight sacks, and two forced fumbles. Protecting the Gilbert quarterback, Jacob's performance as a lineman graded 90% this season with 45 pancake blocks. Behind their leadership, the Indians made it to the second round of the 3A playoffs. At Pillion High, playing at linebacker, tight end, and halfback for the Panthers, George helped lead Pillion into the first round of the 3A playoffs. He recorded 54 tackles and one sack on defense. He also made five catches for 59 yards and one touchdown on offense. The North-South All-Star Game took place this past weekend and showcased, showcased our best of the best. Our next North-South All-Stars led their respective teams to win this season on the volleyball court. Selected by the South Carolina Coaches Association of Women's Sports, these players made a significant impact on and off the court. From Lexington High, team members Janie Mosier and Maggie Sally played for the 4A-5A South Team. Are Janie and Maggie here? Come on down. For LHS, Maggie finished her high school career with 369 digs, 35 aces, 342 kills, and 36 blocks in 44 matches. Janie finished with 55 assists, 298 digs, 41 aces, and three kills. So let's just stop right there and give her a little round of applause. That's great. Next, we'd like to call up Pillion High's Madison Nicholson, who played for the 1A-2A-3A South Team. Is Madison here? There she is. A mainstay on the Panthers volleyball team, Madison ended her career with 514 assists, 365 digs, 114 aces, and 76 kills during her career at Pillion High School. She also served as captain this year. All three of these All-Star players played in an All-Star match, played in All-Star matches held on November 17th at Erskine College. Congratulations to these young ladies. Okay, next, we recognize students behind two of last year's award-winning yearbooks. Both Pleasant Hill Middle and River Bluff High received the South Carolina Scholastic Press Association's highest honor, the Palmetto Award, for their 2017-2018 yearbooks. The students who created the Palmetto Award Class One Award-Winning Yearbook at Pleasant Hill Middle last year now attend Lexington and River Bluff High Schools. They include Lexington High's Trinity Bullock, Noel Berman, and if you're here, come on down, Meredith Cook, Xander Jeffcoat, Leila Kennedy, Caitlin McCormick, Shelby Masarrows, I think I said that right, Emily Montgomery, Braden Myers, Samantha Otto, Perry Rulyard, and Emily Walker, as well as River Bluff, River Bluff High's Carissa Mahias. Pillion High School, excuse me, Pleasant Hill Middle School won the Palmetto Award in Class One for their yearbook entitled "In the Moment." So we're going to pause here for a photograph with these, with this staff.
Come on, y'all are in the yearbook. You should know how to do this.
Yeah. While they're getting their picture made, let's give them a round of applause. Yeah, great, way to go. River Bluff High's 2017-2018 Yearbook, The Tributary, featured the theme "Greater Than" and won the Palmetto Award in Class Four. The winning annual staff members from River Bluff High include Jada Alred, Emily Antolic, Brooke Benifield, Hannah Brazil, Anna Brown, are they here? Great. Sophie Burnett, Lauren Chapel, Elena Deeny, William Dora, Olivia Farrar, Abigail Gunter, Jonathan Ross, Erin Tucker, Elijah Zamora, as well as the current Lexington High School student Jessica Powell. We salute these two groups for creatively capturing a year's worth of memories for all to enjoy and let's now recognize the River Bluff, River Bluff High Yearbook Staff. Going back to football, for our next award, we have a student trainer to recognize. Would Pillion High senior Dalton Byrd come forward? Is Dalton here? There he is. A diligent student in Pillion High's Sports Medicine Program, Dalton received an invitation to work as a student athletic trainer at the Shrine Bowl of the Carolinas. Organizers honor only two students from South Carolina each year, I want you all to hear that, two, only two from the whole state, with an invitation to assist the game's athletic trainers and player on the field, players on the field. Dalton's invitation marks the third time that SCATA recognized a Pillion High Sports Medicine Program athletic trainer at the Shrine Bowl. Boy, we're really changing around now. We wrap up our student recognition with a gold medalist. This fall, River Bluff High's Rowan Nath completed on Team USA at the World Traditional Karate Federation Championship. Did I say that right? Okay, good. A committed student of karate since the age of five, Rowan won a gold and silver medal at the international competition held in Canada. He went all the way to Canada. He won his gold medal in kata, an event which, with detailed choreographed patterns of movements, and his silver medal in koga, kogo kumite, I guess, I'm sorry. Thank you, control fighting between two competitors. Rowan earned a trip to the international competition after qualifying at Nationals this summer, where he also won a gold and silver medal. Let's congratulate him on recognizing, on representing us abroad. Okay, we're now going to head outdoors for our next award. Would River Bluff High science teacher Amy Price come forward? Is Amy here?
She's here.
Yeah, she's all the way in the back. Mrs. Price won an invasive species program grant from Clemson University that allows her students to study insects in the world around them. The grant included 40 book bags containing notebooks, field guides, digital cameras, vests, calculators, binoculars, insect collection kits, insect ID guides, and water bottles. These supplies allow students to catalog their findings, much like the researchers at Clemson University. Thank you, Mrs. Price, for seeking out this particular opportunity for your students. Online donors made projects possible for several of our teachers this year. Through the online giving platform, DonorsChoose.org, educators can post funding requests for specific items such as books, storage containers, and even musical instruments. Tonight, we recognize the following teachers with fully funded projects. At Carolina Springs Elementary, we want to recognize Deborah Garrett, Alicia Jinko, Jennifer Hendrickson, and Catherine, Catherine Winner. Are they here? There they are. We'd also like to recognize Carolina Springs Middle Schools Audrey Coleman, Anna Faust, Cassandra Gordon, Veek Kamason, Angela Nessmith, and Jennifer Simmons. Here they come. And at Deerfield Elementary, we have Ms. Samantha Johnston. At Gilbert Primary, we have Sarah Burgess, Elizabeth Chandler, and Jennifer Duke. At Lexington High, we have Maggie Donaldson. At Meadow Glen Elementary, we have Casey Davis. From Midway Elementary, we have Catherine Zong. At New Providence Elementary, we have Kay Derrick. At Pleasant Hill Elementary, we have Michelle Osterhout. At Rocky Creek Elementary, we have Alicia Clamp. Saxagoth Elementary, we have Haley Bolches. Examples of their funded projects include covering field trip cost and purchasing student-friendly camping supplies to create an outdoor learning space. And we want to thank each of you who took the time to pursue these, these money offerings and we'd also like to thank the people that donated them to our students. So thank you, teachers, for making this happen. We're now going to move back to the Shrine Bowl, but instead of students, we're going to recognize coaches. So we recognize three Lexington District One coaches tonight. Gilbert High's Chad Lee Part, is Coach Lee Part here, right there on the front row? Gilbert High's Chad Liepart, is Coach Liepart here, right there on the front row? Peleon High's David Smith. They both served as assistant coaches for the South team during the North-South All-Star Game. Peleon High's Kenneth Tucker, is Mr. Tucker here? Great. Coached the Shrine Bowl's South team as an assistant coach. Game organizers base their selection of coaches on leadership and season performance. During the 2018 season, all three coaches saw their teams make it to the 3A playoffs and sent senior All-Stars to the North-South All-Star Game. And I can personally say, it was a great year. You guys had a great year, so thank you. Okay, perhaps our next guest brought back a special guest with her, or perhaps she may have left him back at Midway Elementary. Fourth grade teacher Laura LaClair won a Pets in the Classroom Grant from national retailer Petco. With the grant, she purchased a bearded dragon named Orion for her classroom, along with supplies for Orion's care and feeding. Orion helps engage students as they gain real-life learning across content areas by studying his particular species. So congratulations to Laura. Is she here? I think she's home. I think she's keeping the Orion company. Okay, now we're going to go to Principal of the Year. The South Carolina Art Education Association recently honored two Lexington District 1 educators with their top awards. Congratulations to White Knoll Elementary Principal Nicole Mitchell. I think I saw her earlier. Is she here? There she is. She won Outstanding Principal of the Year, and Lexington High art teacher Candace Cannon won the Secondary Art Educator of the Year Award. Is Candace here? These awards honor educators who support art education in their school, increase public awareness of the importance of quality art education, and set high standards for quality art education. Ad administrator and veteran teacher, as an administrator and veteran teacher in the Midlands, Principal Mitchell joined the district in 2016. Prior to joining the district, she served as principal at two schools in another district. An educator for 13 years, Ms. Cannon teaches Photography 1 and 2, Art for Honors, and AP Studio Art. We want to thank both of you for supporting the arts. No matter the final score of the Carolina-Clemson game, Gilbert Primary came out the winner. Four-year-old kindergarten teacher Mandy Grigsby won $500 from the South Carolina Department of Education's Read Your Way to the Big Game Contest, which provides reading incentives for students and teachers leading up to the big game. From more than 50,000 entries, Ms. Grigsby won funds to purchase books for shared reading, along with boogie board tablets for interactive writing. Congratulations, that's great. Now, we welcome teachers from Deerfield Elementary. As a German partial immersion school, Deerfield joined a prestigious network of school teaching students STEM and German simultaneously. The nation's only elementary school in the Posh Initiative, a network of more than 2,000 schools that promote the study of German, Deerfield received an invitation to pilot a digital kinder university. Only 12 other schools in the country received an invitation to join this global network. Students enrolled digitally in the kinder university and explored different scientific areas while learning German in a fun, playful way. Staff members who made this possible include Cindy Brazel, Callison Coggins, are they here? Jessica Dillon, Kinga Easter, Bertha Fretwell, Pamela Hutchinson, Tanya Jeffrey, Kelly Poles, Cherie Thompson, Tanya Ward, and Nicole Willis. Congratulations Principal Malone's staff and students on this wonderful achievement. Now, we're going to recognize some recipients of our Safety, Security, and Risk Control Grants. Represented by Chief Operations Officer Jeff Salters and Safety and Emergency Services Director Chris Ellisor and Safety and Emergency Services Coordinator Sean Spivey, the Operations Office received two grants designed to improve the safety of students and staff. The first grant, a South Carolina Department of Education School Safety Infrastructure Grant totaling $60,000, allows the district to purchase communication upgrades for use throughout the district. The second grant, one from the South Carolina School Board's Insurance Trust 2018-2019 Risk Control Grant Program, totaled more than $68,000. The district used this grant to install keyless door locks at several schools, offer safety training programs, and even purchase step stools to help teachers hang material in hallways and classrooms. And if I may take a point of privilege, Mr. Salters, will you tell a little bit more about both of these gentlemen and their past histories, so people will understand why we have them working with our district now?
Sure, we're very blessed to have two former law enforcement officers in the district working for us. Mr. Spivey worked for Lexington County Sheriff's Department, and Mr. Ellisor was with the county police. Both very savvy in investigations and dealing with safety and emergency services, so we're very blessed to have them.
Thank you. We want to thank all three of you for this. A few more grants, this time from the South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control. Meadow Glen Elementary, Midway Elementary, and River Bluff High schools received grant funding to support their efforts to reduce waste and pollution. Winners include Midway Elementary and River Bluff High. Meadow Glen, represented by Shannon Frye, Jeannie McKinney, and Deborah Vernon, received a $2,000 Champions of the Environment Grant for growing 21st century skills through environmental advocacy, using recycled milk gardens to improve growing condition in a raised bed garden. Third graders designed and decorated recycled cafeteria cans and learned about improving air quality by potting air quality plants into the recycled cans. Fifth graders, meanwhile, made soil observations and recorded their observations on soil purchase recommendations. Midway Elementary, represented by Jason Trice, and River Bluff High, represented by Amy Price, both received DEHEC recycling education grants. With their $1,500, Midway purchased composting bins and supplies, as well as a small refrigerator where individuals can donate unwanted milk, yogurt, and cheese for others to enjoy. At River Bluff, the schools installed two chewing gum recycling containers where students can send chewed gum. I don't know if you heard her, she said, "Oh yes, it's gross." Okay, let me start over so everybody can hear this. At River Bluff, the school installs two chewing gum recycling containers where students can send chewed gum to Terracycle, a private recycling company that recycles the chewed gum into rain boots and rubber soles. Now that is unique. So thank you for showing our students exciting ways to go green.
I'm just glad they didn't turn their chewing gum into more chewing gum.
Food Service and Nutrition Director Sally Nicholson applied for a grant for White Knoll High School that gives students a second chance for breakfast. Thanks to a $5,000 grant from the Dairy Alliance, the school will serve food in the hallway upstairs and in the hallway downstairs between first and second period. Food Service purchased two mobile carts and supplies to make this possible with grant funding. I can see some teenage boys who are really growing love this, have a meal about every hour, so thank you, Ms. Nicholson. Okay, sticking to the cafeteria for our next recognition, we celebrate the food service managers at our schools. Under their leadership, all our schools receive certification from the United States Department of Agriculture's Healthier U.S. School Challenge for encouraging health and wellness by promoting nutrition and physical activity. First, let's bring up our gold certification-winning school, Forts Pond Elementary. Janet Callahan represents Forts Pond. Six of our schools received silver certification. They are Gilbert Middle, represented by Gina Pugh. Is Ms. Pugh here? Gilbert Primary, represented by Jackie Roof. Here she comes, and here they come. Lake Murray Elementary, represented by Rebecca Boone. Peleon High, represented by Melinda Wainwright. Peleon Middle, represented by Teresa Becklaheimer, and Red Bank Elementary, represented by Elise McClary. And these are our silver award winners. And I just want to go on record for saying, these ladies and their staffs, they produce hundreds and hundreds of school meals twice a day. They do breakfast and lunch, and they are feeding our children and keeping them healthy, and we really appreciate them. Yeah, thank you. Our bronze certification schools include Carolina Springs Elementary, represented by Deanna Weed; Carolina Springs Middle, represented by Angela Furtick; Deerfield Elementary, represented by Teresa Grimsley; Gilbert Elementary, represented by Lenicha Shealy; and Gilbert High, represented by Renee Ritter; and Lexington Elementary, represented by Pam Davis. We've got a lot on this list, so we'll keep going. Lexington High, represented by Krista Heinlein; Lexington Middle, represented by Holly Chaplin; Meadow Glen Elementary, represented by Victoria Jenkins; Meadow Glen Middle, represented by Sandy Merk; Midway Elementary, represented by Jason Trice; New Providence Elementary, represented by Erica Wilson; Oak Grove Elementary, represented by Cindy Belk; Peleon Elementary, represented by Snoo Snively; Pleasant Hill Elementary, represented by Karen Loman; Pleasant Hill Middle, represented by Kim Gerton; River Bluff High, represented by Dorothy Roberts; Rocky Creek Elementary, represented by Cindy Nichols; Saxagotha Elementary, represented by Judy Garrity; White Knoll Elementary, represented by Paige Porter; White Knoll High, represented by Kelly Blevins; White Knoll Middle, represented by Denise Todd. Let me tell you some more about this award while this group gets their picture made. The USDA gives this achievement to food service programs that provide training for food service staff, promote nutrition education for children and their parents, and encourage nutritious food choices and physical activity. And I would like to ask the board, let's all stand, because this staff, they don't come that often to our meetings, and they do a yeoman's job every single day. I wish Bert Dooley was still on the board, because he just salivates over some meal with vegetable soup, homemade rolls, and peanut butter sandwiches, which I know you're probably not allowed to serve any of that these days, but if you ever ask him, I think that was his favorite meal of his life. Okay, we have a special guest we're going to invite to the front. Would Jacob Millman come forward? And this is a neat thing, and look at all these badges. Congratulations, Jacob. Jacob is a student at South Carolina Connections Academy who decided to help other students in Lexington County with his Eagle Scout project. He created sensory kits for all Lexington District 1 schools and delivered them personally to each principal. Items in the kit included small toys and games, which can calm a student with autism or a student experiencing a stressful situation. Jacob purchased the items, assembled the kits, and made sure each school had the right amount based on their need. And as I said earlier, this is part of Jacob's Eagle Scout project. And I think, Dr. Little, I believe you're an Eagle Scout, aren't you?
Not his Eagle Scout, though. I didn't have nearly the merit badge. He has 101 merit badges.
So we just want to thank you, Jacob, and we want to salute you for all your endeavors. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time tonight to help us recognize the many honors and achievements of our students and staff, and the many generous contributions of our local businesses and community. We absolutely love to share all of this good news with each of you. Honories, when you leave the meeting, remember to head to your left and into the lobby, where a member of the Communications Office will help you find your certificate. Now, just as I promised, you are welcome to stay, as Ms. Green encouraged all of you to stay.
Please stay.
Or you can head home and enjoy your winter break and your Christmas holiday. Thank you so much. Thank you all for coming.
I have a witness that I actually did try to...
Okay, while everyone gets situated again, I do have a speaker tonight, and so I have a lot of instructions for that, so I'm going to go ahead and get started, so we can work our way through that. Item 10.0 is citizens' participation, and the Lexington County School District 1 Board of Trustees provides a time for citizens' participation at each regular board meeting. There are a few guidelines. First, in order to speak, you must be a parent or legal guardian of a student in Lexington County School District 1 or a resident and taxpayer of the district. Second, each speaker has three minutes. Third, you may comment on an agenda item, school operations, programs, policies, or other matters of concerns. However, you may not speak about specific individuals, whether student or staff. There are other ways to bring situations like that to the board's attention. And if you did want to speak on something like that, you would just see Dr. Little. We want to give everyone who came here tonight to speak the opportunity to speak. For that reason, board members will not reply to an individual's remarks. This is your time to tell us what you think. And if someone makes the point, which I only have one speaker, so I'm going to skip that paragraph. And we also ask that you not clap or make any comments, either while an individual is speaking or after a speaker finishes, as that slows down the process. If you want to speak tonight, you are asked to fill out a card that gives us your name and address for our records. These cards were in the sign-in table as you came into the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to speak that did not fill out a card and would like to receive one now and fill it out and give it to us? Okay. We have one speaker tonight. As stated earlier, you should not expect us to reply to your remarks. This is your time to talk to us. Although we may ask you a question as a board, we will not take any action tonight in response to issues raised during citizens' participation. So tonight, I have Timothy Patrick Monreal, is that how you pronounce the name? Is that, that's it? Okay. Monreal, okay. And Mr. Monreal is talking about teacher pay. He lives on North Lake Drive, and please come forward to the podium and address the board. Thank you, we appreciate you speaking with us.
I don't think I need a microphone.
Well, we need for you to be on the microphone, we're recording the meeting, so.
Thank you all, it's kind of awkward. So, my name's Tim Monreal, I teach 6th and 7th grade, Social Studies at Lexington Middle School. I'm also an instructor and PhD student at USC. Additionally, I'm an area representative for a grassroots organization called SC for Ed, and primarily, we're focused on three things: substantially rising teacher pay, and support staff salaries, fully funding education, and also protecting the time and rights of teachers. This past Wednesday, I was at the State House advocating for, quite frankly, something I wish more boards and superintendents took vocal stands on, that is, increasing state funding for education. Although I greatly appreciate the efforts taken recently by Lexington 1 to increase teacher pay, I understand that type of substantial increases that are honestly needed for me to pay back student loans, get ahead of medical bills, stop working multiple part-time jobs, and maybe, just maybe, cobble up enough money for a down payment on a house for my family and I, are beyond the immediate control of this board. Thus, I'm asking the board to consider publicly supporting State Bill 244 introduced by Senator Fanning that would establish a teacher bill of rights. Among other things, the bill of rights would pay teachers at the southeast average, protect planning time, and ensure that teachers are compensated for any extra demands they take on. I was informed by a board member that any school board can submit resolutions and statements of belief regarding legislation with the South Carolina School Boards Association, the SC SBA. A public submission of support for this bill would make it clear that Lexington 1 supports its teachers and is willing to take a leadership role in fixing our teacher shortage. Just an aside, I teach at USC, and the numbers of teacher candidates that are coming in for our program is absolutely alarming. We don't have members coming in. At the very least, I'm asking the board to publicly support in writing the need for state legislation to focus on raising teacher pay and fully funding education. This would mean a lot to many teachers who quite honestly own in this fight. Thank you so much for your time, and I'm proud to be a teacher at my school and in this great district. Thanks.
Thank you. And we are huge champions of teachers, and we do work with our delegation on trying to improve funding for teachers, and I'm really pleased to let y'all know that just last week, Representative Chris Wooten and Representative Paula Calhoun from Lexington County have been asked to serve on the Education Committee, and we're just thrilled to have two of our own on that committee, so thank you, we appreciate your comments.
Ms. Smith, would you mind if I added just a quick minute? So this summer, I became aware of the SC for Ed Caucus Group, and I actually attended their day-long caucus meeting at USC back in September, and Senator Fanning was the keynote speaker, one of the best speakers I've ever heard, he was fantastic. But I encourage you, if you don't already, if you're on Facebook, to follow this group on Facebook, because it really is teachers advocating for teachers, and I think it would give you a real good glimpse into their efforts and what they're doing to really speak up on behalf of all the teachers in South Carolina.
Great, thank you, Ms. Green. Any other comments, board? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. We're going to go to 11.0, which are action items. A board, in your board package, you received a student travel request. Do I hear a motion to approve 12 student travel requests as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the 12 travel requests, that's the suggestion of Dr. Little, as presented.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. I know that these came from Dr. Tally. Dr. Tally, do you have any comments for us regarding these 12 student travel requests? Okay. Board, are there any questions, comments, or discussion regarding the travel request? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is unanimous, and those kids can travel away. Okay, at this time, we're going to go to 12.0, which is a superintendent's report, and I am going to turn it over to Dr. Greg Little, and I believe all of his items are for information-only, board, there will not be any action items in 12.0.
So, before we get to the meat of the report with Mr. Salters and operations update, as well as some of the other things we're going to talk about tonight, I did want to add that yesterday and today has been very exciting for me, because we have recognized the top 10 finalists for the Lexington 1 Teacher of the Year, and so we do a prize patrol kind of thing. Of course, our prize patrol is some cookies and a thing for their door, a door plaque, thank you very much. But to see the excitement on their faces, on the kids' faces, and their principals' faces, we are truly blessed to have some amazing teachers here in Lexington 1, and we recognized them this week, which was really cool. That top 10 was pretty neat for the last couple of days. We are just a couple more days remaining until we go home for winter break, and we are excited about the new year and all the wonderful things that the new year is going to bring for Lexington 1. Also, finally, as Ms. Green talked about, or Ms. Smith talked about, Mr. Wooten being on the House Education Committee, I can report that Mr. Wooten has filed a school calendar flexibility bill, providing local school districts much more flexibility in creating their school calendar. And so we appreciate his support. He and I have been on the phone the last few days, talking about what that looks like and things that would help our district, and so having some more flexibility, I think, would also speak to some other issues, that we could do some different things for our teachers and for our students, and create a calendar that more closely resembles what our values are, as opposed to having Ori County determine when we go to school, which I've always thought was unusual. So, very excited.
Do you mind if I make a real quick comment about that? So, you know, Chris Wooten represents part of our district, but there are a number of other representatives, and so now, your job is, where you live, to contact your representative and get them on board, and then your family throughout the state asks them to contact their representatives and senators, because this is very, very important for us. I mean, we need this flexibility, so that we can make the decisions based on what's best for our local district.
Okay, thank you very much. So, if there's nothing else, without further ado, Mr. Salters, if you would provide us with an operations update, please.
I want to bring tonight to you images of our new middle school site. Beechwood Middle School, which is, you know, again, located off of Highway 378 and at the corner of Beechwood Drive. You see, we've made some significant progress, in spite of all the rain we've had. We had another three inches of rain there this past weekend. Believe it or not, there are no significant trees right around the building, but we feel like it's in a rain forest. We're commenting on that today. It's just unbelievable the amount of rain we've had on the site. But construction is still progressing, and we're looking forward to an on-time completion, if not early, completion of the project. So, you're looking at aerial shot, 378 would be in the lower portion here, this is the main parking lot, and this will be your main driveway and student drop-off coming across here eventually. We've got our larger auditorium space here is taking shape, and our gymnasium area here, office administration area over towards the center of the building, and you can see, as we kind of progress around, you can see a lot of the masonry has been laid, and our roofs are being put in place. This is a shot from the backside of the building, our cafeteria space here, very excited about that space, working with our food service department that was recognized earlier, and our student classroom wings here on this side of the building, three classroom wings, two-story wings. And you notice a lot of clay and water around the site, it's become very difficult to get around, moving equipment around the site, to work on the project, but they're continuing to press through that, and we're expecting more rain Thursday and Friday as well, so that'll slow us down for a little bit. This is a shot of the first classroom wing, these are actually the science labs on the end of the wing there. This is a Nietzsche High product, it's a concrete-based product, it looks like a wood panel siding product, give a little contrast to the building. The front entry, this will be leading right into the secured foyer. As you know, in our new security designs, we'll have an intercom button here with a camera, and so anyone trying to get into the building will have to be announced at that point, and then buzzed into the building and over into the main office. This is a shot into the media center, which eventually will have glass here and some doors going out into a courtyard. And this is a look from the second story, looking out towards the front entry. So this is your main hallway, the front classroom wing, and then the lower hallway and a center commons area. Your main office is here at the front. And this is a shot looking down into the cafeteria space, very similar to what we have over at Meadow Glen Middle School with a small elevated platform for seating and/or limited performances. Our serving lines are in the back. And then a shot out of the front of the cafeteria, there'll be some hardscape here with some tables for outdoor seating for students during their lunch period. And this is a good shot of some of the site conditions we've been dealing with. You see all the water collecting here, now these gentlemen are actually putting in some clips for the windows to start being mounted, which is very exciting, we get the building dried in, you can really start seeing some progress on the finishes on the inside once that happens in the next month. All the steam there is from some of the kettles related to the roofing that's going on in the gymnasium, so good progress there. And then this is just an upper shot of the, what we call, clear story that looks down into the center commons area of the building. So I'll be happy to answer any questions related to the site and the construction there.
Mr. Salters, just remind us again about the zoning for that school.
Yeah, so we're looking to bring to the board a recommendation for first reading in January for the zoning tenants' lines for Beechwood, and then we will have a community input meetings at our respective schools that will be affected, and that would be Lexington Middle, Pleasant Hill Middle, and Meadow Glen Middle School. And we'll take feedback on the draft lines, and then I'll have a second reading in March, and then likely a third reading in, excuse me, a second reading in February, and likely a third meeting, reading in March, and that would be for final action at that point, positioning us for opening the school in August of 2019. And I did want to highlight for you tonight, if I can get the mouse, here we go, some additional opportunities we have now on our webpage. I'm going to have to transition here real quick, get this up. Okay, we have a newly-formed page on our website, and it is accessible under About, and you're familiar with this link, About and Building Plan. This is where we hosted a lot of our information related to our building plan and the vote in the 2018 referendum, and so, if the page will load. We have come out here to this page, and our communications department, in conjunction with our facility staff, have worked really hard to develop a site where our constituents can come out and check on the progress of every project in the building plan. And so, by clicking on any one of these links, it will take you directly to the school, and then you'll see Before photos, and they'll come up, and that's the entry there at the campus. And then you see we're doing some secure entry upgrades, and then the anticipated start date for those upgrades, we're doing the design phase in 2019, January. You'll see a current photo as construction is started, and then you'll see a completed date.
That's great, that's impressive.
We'll have that available for each project in the building plan, and then also, of course, the new school sites as well. And so you'll be able to track the progress of any particular site, excuse me, any particular school or site that you're interested in, and your computer... particular school or, or site that you're, you're interested in, and your computer will work better than this one, I'm sure, uh, and this mouse, and, um, you'll be able to navigate the page and, and go back and forth and see, you know, the progress as, as we go. Um, and so, you can look out there now on all of these, um, dates or, or anticipated start dates and are, are live and have been scheduled into the, uh, program. So, if you have a question about a particular school or project at a school, you can take a look out here and see when the projects are planned to start. And when we say divi- design phase, that's when we'll work with an architect to, you know, actually do this, the design work, and then there'll be a contract negotiation phase and then a construction phase, and those will be updated accordingly.
Specific to the Beechwood, uh, project, how do we correlate with the construction timeline because of rain delays and, and those kind of things?
Uh, there have actually, I think there's been some 90 days of, of, of rain there, but actually, we're still on schedule, um, and actually, uh, potentially may gain a little, little bit of, of time there. They've been able to really work well around the site to, with the site contractor to keep the, um, the water, um, down and clay, uh, mitigated, so we're doing well. Other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If I can add, uh, we are really excited about this as a good communication tool. Uh, we want to keep people up to date about what's happening with every project, and we, we recognize that a picture is worth a thousand words, and so, that's why we want to have what the before, before photo is and what the current photo is, and we'll archive those photos as well throughout the, uh, throughout the, uh, process, and they'll be somewhere, you'll be able to reach them somewhere, Mary Beth, I'm trying to point at you, you'll be able to reach them somewhere on the site, you can just click on it, and then you can see all the different photos associated with that project. I think that's what the plan is. Yes?
We're working to...
Absolutely. That's what we're working on. So, we're trying to make it, uh, uh, we had a, a teacher actually from Lexington Middle School, as a matter of fact, who said, "We wanted to make it like, um, Domino's Pizza", their website, about how you can track the pizza through the process. And so, that's really what our goal is, is you can really track the progress of the, of the, uh, of the project as we're going along. And so, uh, and, again, just to highlight, you, there also, the years and stuff are built in, so you can see how the projects are, are built out over the five-year period. When we talk to people about this, we remind people it is a five-year building plan, which means there are certain things that aren't, everything can't be done in 2019. It has to be mapped out, and so, that's, they've done that, and nicely done with your team and, and, uh, Mary Beth and Communications as well. It took a lot of collaboration and, uh, very pleased and proud of both of you. That's good stuff. All right. Okay, so next we have, uh, we good, Ms. Salters? All right, uh, next we have a, a quick legislative update?
We do. I would like to take opportunity, though, to say that, uh, my staff's been incredible. That page has taken, um, days and days and weeks and weeks and hours and hours of work, and, um, we've had, um, some of the staff gathering photographs, but Lindsay Mitchell has led that page, and, um, she's, I told her I'd give her a free day off after everything she's done, once it got finished, because she's been incredible, and we really do need to thank her. Um, it's sort of like, uh, if you've ever done darkroom work, um, you, you know, you thought you'd go into a darkroom, create a photograph, and you'd spend an hour? Well, that's the same way this kind of work is. You go in there thinking you're gonna spend an hour, and you, it's, um, a day later, so it's just really time-intensive and takes lots of intelligence, and she's done a really great job. Um, for the legislative update, uh, Madam Chair, Board Members and guests, I know this is a very full meeting, and I'll keep your first legislative update of the year pretty brief. Um, but as you know by now, the legislature begins its regular session each time on the second Tuesday in January, which will be January 8th this year. The 2019 legislative session is the first year of a two-year, 123rd South Carolina General Assembly. So, as you remember, they come in two-year groupings, so, um, something doesn't pass this year, it can be carried over into the second year, but at the end of the second year, if it doesn't pass, it's wiped clean, they have to start all over. So, we're in that first year, so we're starting all over again. And so, pre-filing a bill started this month of December. The Senate prefilled almost 300 pieces of legislation, um, on Wednesday, December 12th, and more than 37 of those involved, as you heard our teacher speak so eloquently, about K-12 education. Um, they involve school buses, year-round schools, teacher pay raises, the possible reduction of mandatory testing, expanding 4K full-day kindergarten opportunities, and so much more. Really important work is being introduced. House members prefilled legislation today, and unfortunately, it's not accessible yet or wasn't when we came down here, um, but it'll be online soon. Uh, we'll begin to track some of those bills and the ones that impact our district the most, and then we'll give you regular, regular monthly updates. Uh, in the meantime, as you probably know, new board orientation's the only state mandated training, although board members earn points for participating in statewide conferences and onsite training in their district. And at the School Board Association is part of that. On Tuesday, December 4th, we held the, um, new board members', uh, training session as required by South Carolina Code of Law, Section 59, 1945. Dr. Tiffany Richardson, who's General Counsel and Director of Policy and Legal Services for the South Carolina School Boards Association, presented Boardsmanship 101 presentation that was very thorough and, um, very interactive and pretty entertaining. So, right after that, um, the School Boards Association held its annual legislative conference, which many of you went to, December 7th to the 9th, and so, I'm sure you have thoughts you'd like to share from that, and we will do that in January at the January Board Meeting. Um, our new board members will also head off to the South Carolina School Boards Association's February 21st new board, um, orientation training that's required with them. So, um, we're staying pretty active already in a brand-new legislative year.
Any questions for Ms. Hill? All right. Um, now, this next part, we're gonna move on to, uh, a strategic plan update, and, uh, this is something that, um, I'm just gonna tell you I'm incredibly excited about. So, about, uh, October of last year, so about 14 months ago, I guess, we began the strategic planning process, and we sent a group to EdLeader 21. We, uh, started to engage the board in conversations about, um, what they wanted a strategic plan to look like. Uh, we started to have, uh, conversations with our community, uh, from that point forward about power skills, uh, about what, uh, we asked the board about really kind of, we wanted to capture, uh, the vision and direction of the board. We talked to our community about what skills and dispositions we wanted our students to have when they graduated. And we came up with this, uh, with this strategic plan that is a little different. I just want to remind you, it's a little different than what's been done in the past. It is a three-year strategic plan, not a five-year strategic plan. The idea, and if I'm, am I, Mr. Poole, am I stepping on information? I'm just trying to do a, a brief update. Um, it's a three-year strategic plan as opposed to a five-year strategic plan. The thinking is that a five-year strategic plan is really too slow and cumbersome to handle the rapid rate of change that we see in schools. Uh, we decided to make system commitments and promises to our community. We'll, we'll talk about those system commitments tonight. Of course, we adopted a new vision, empower each child to design the future, uh, as well as a, a new vision that talked about extraordinary, uh, uh, caring community and extraordinary collaborators, creators, create, uh, critical thinkers, et cetera. And we have worked really hard over the last few months to advance that strategic plan. So, one of the things that, uh, we wanted to make sure that we did is that we did progress checks on the strategic plan. Uh, we don't want you hearing about the strategic plan in August and then hearing it about it again in May. That's not really what our goal is. And so, um, the hurricanes, I think, messed us up one time. It kind of got us off schedule, uh, in terms of providing a progress, uh, update. So, what we wanted to do was to do the state of the strategic plan in December, and we will do this a couple more times before the end of the year, and, uh, to show you what we've been working on. And so, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Mr. Poole, Mr. Bowers, and Dr. Phillips.
Thank you, Dr. Little, uh, members of the board, Madam Chair. Uh, we appreciate your time tonight, and we're gonna try to, um, kind of talk through where we are currently. We spent last year, as Dr. Little stated, um, crafting a plan, uh, in a way that we hadn't done before, with a lot of guidance and a lot of expertise from, um, a lot of different resources, but really thinking boldly about what it means to plan for a future that changes so rapidly and, um, and so, in that three-year strategic plan, we, we needed to start with that, that vision statement that was bold, that was memorable, uh, that really meant something to, uh, the teachers, the administrators, the students, uh, the parents and the, the community that they could hold on to and, and get excited about. And we feel like, based on where we are this fall, from the conversations that we're hearing, the fact that we hear the vision stated as a reference to why we do the work we do at a classroom level or at a school level, uh, means that we kind of hit the mark with this, uh, that it resonates with people in a lot of different ways, um, but it's broad enough to, to really, um, drive us forward with, with kind of the motivation. Uh, the mission piece behind the vision was our efforts to say, "So, what does that really look like?" We know that ultimately, we want to empower our students to design the future, not just their individual future, but collectively the future for all of us, because if not them, who? And, and so, they can do it, but what does that look like when you walk into a classroom? So, we added the mission statement to really put hands and feet to that vision to say, "We want to see not some students, uh, but all students," uh, in all capitals, uh, demonstrating certain skills on a regular basis." And we heard over and over and over from our stakeholders, um, that the, the family feel the caring aspects of Lexington County were something that were valued, and that had to be a part of what we saw in our schools, and you see that in the system commitments as well. So, uh, the, the vision and the mission, um, in my experience in Lexington One and in different school districts, uh, has taken hold in a really palpable way, uh, across our system, and you hear the language on a regular basis. You hear it as, as benchmarks around the behaviors, the teaching, the assessment that we see in classes. Um, so, we're feeling good about, uh, that becoming part of a common language for us, and that's what we've got from, from district administrators and teachers as well. So, uh, as Dr. Little stated, uh, we didn't want to build a strategic plan around, um, just numbers to check off on a list. We wanted to build a plan that, that kind of committed to, to promises, promises we make to our students, promises we make, uh, to our community, our business partners, uh, and, and really, uh, our vision for, for our state and what we're trying to do. So, uh, we started with, uh, Commitment One, which is about preparing all students to be successful at the next level with the skills that they need. Um, and that can be, um, a reading level, uh, in pre-K, and that can be a readiness to walk into the workforce, uh, with the, the power skills, uh, ready to, to demonstrate what you need. But the challenge is always to look back at that, that student in class and say, "Is, is this student ready for what needs, uh, or she needs in math, language, arts, world language, et cetera?" Um, uh, that's Commitment One, and it's been a nice measure for us to go along, um, and, and check our progress and check our actions. Um, Commitment Two is about tapping into the idea that, uh, memorization of traditional academic skills are not necessarily what the workforce needs, and, um, equal to those academic skills are, uh, something that we don't even refer to as soft skills anymore. They, these are power skills because they're essential, and, and we've talked about it before, um, as we developed, that if you can write an algorithm for it, then it's probably not necessary to teach it to a, a student because, uh, they're gonna need something else in the workforce. Those power skills that our community identified are listed here in their aid in particular, so each school is kind of gauging their progress towards these. Um, some are easier at some sites than others, but it's interesting to watch it develop, and it's been a really interesting fall watching, uh, these conversations, uh, come about, like, like what does accountability look like for a second grader versus a senior? What does, um, integrity look like, uh, in terms of, um, participation in a group project or academic honesty? Uh, and how do you have those conversations? Because they really are happening in our school system. Um, Commitment Three is all about that, that piece that it's not just inside our four walls of the, the building. Um, our students benefit from tremendous partnerships in the community. Uh, our foundation is a great example of that. So, we ask schools to, to measure their progress and their communication, both from the, the customer service you receive at the, the front, uh, desk or a, a phone call, um, that, all the way to how are they reaching out to, to opportunities, um, in work-based learning, et cetera, uh, from community partnerships. And again, we're seeing, um, a really nice baseline as we start this plan. Commitment Four is about equipping our adults within our system. Um, not only equipping them with what they need to be successful, but we wanted to ensure this last piece to equip them to be successful in order to advocate and ensure the success of all students. So, that's, uh, again, something we come back to when we're making decisions, and we're starting, um, in January, uh, some really, uh, interesting and different kind of resource allocation discussions, uh, as we enter HR season and budget season about this commitment. So, in addition to those commitments, our strategic plan has two strategic portfolios, which are high-leverage strategies to say, "There are some students who need a really different approach," and we've seen Project Hope come together with aspects of, uh, how we address mental wellness, um, how we address, um, the way we serve, uh, students, uh, on sort of a rehabilitation path, um, and how we, uh, manage our procedures in-house and, and work students to transition effectively, um, in our, within our school system. The other piece, um, a different kind of future requires a different kind of leadership. Um, so, we've invested time, energy into really thinking about what does a school leader of the future need, and that means principals, assistant principals, teacher leaders, student leaders. So, it's a constant conversation about investing in really thinking and reflecting on what leaders need to be in Lexington One, and we've seen some, some huge, uh, gains in, um, just the conversations that we have about what it means to be a leader. So, I'm talking really fast. If you guys have any questions, feel free to just stop me. So, um, when we put this plan into place, a whole lot of people collaborated over a year, and, and our school board was part of those conversations, and then it became time to, it, it got approved and approved by the state, and the state said, "Well, we've never seen a plan quite like this, but, but we like it." And so, now it's time to make it come to life. And, and this funnel's sort of the idea that, so you take that broad vision, and how do you make it reality for a second grader? How do you make it reality for a, a junior or a senior? And that district vision, so then we measure kind of through the mission. Are we seeing collaboration? Are we seeing caring communities that are fostering relationships with kids? Do those turn into then, um, a place where we can say, "Yeah, we're meeting the promises of those four commitments." Within that, we have specific performance goals, six performance goals where we can kind of measure along the way, and in order to achieve those performance goals that are inside the plan, we have specific action steps, and those action steps get into things like, uh, establishing, um, leadership standards or, um, uh, putting, um, uh, certain models for personalization into classroom instruction, and then that's kind of what we're gauging as we go out and supporting in the classroom. So, that's how the, the strategic plan sort of looks with those strategic portfolios, Project Hope and Leadership Development alongside them. So, um, what we have been talking about most recently, um, within those performance goals, there was one action step that lived across, um, all five of the first five performance goals, and that action step revolved around a different sort of accountability meeting at the school. So, we asked each school across the system, 31 sites, because that includes the alternative school, uh, and LTC, uh, to come together and talk about their students and their commitments in kind of a really public way. Um, and everybody across the system was having data meetings and assessing progress along, uh, in, in the past, but with this strategic plan, we asked schools to do it in a more uniform way, to hold themselves accountable to those promises that we've made, and to talk through the promises with the faces and names of kids. So, are students advancing on time with skills they need to be successful? Well, yes, they are, except in this grade level, and these are the kids who are showing that they need more support. Or, here are the kids that are demonstrating power skills, but they're demonstrating them in these, like, four power skills, but these four we're not seeing as much, so what are we gonna do about that next? And that's what these meetings became. They became the life in the faces of those commitments, to talk about them, not in the abstract, but in the, the reality of, of real kids. So, um, from those meetings, in addition to other data sources, we've been collecting, so where are we, this baseline for the fall, so we can start to make decisions about what's next over the next, uh, three years? And we've done that through school support. And we've done that through school support meetings, dashboard analysis, which Dr. Phillips' office puts together these incredible dashboards to look at different data points in different ways. We've done this, each principal has developed an individual professional learning goal, where they're learning how their own leadership impacts student learning in different ways, and talking about, so does this dimension of my leadership help me, or does it hinder me, or what? And they get coached along the way with that. And we do activity audits and instructional services in a different way than we've done in the past, to look at all the members of instructional services and say, so your time is being spent here, but let's think about shifting over to this spot for now, and then we can shift back. We do learning walks through schools to look for things like power skills, to look for things like learning targets in the classroom, to look for different aspects of instructional programming. And then we have a system called Classroom Mosaic that administrators can use to kind of document trends around teaching. How often do we see certain types of questioning happening? Is that different at different levels? Is it different across feeder patterns? So we can look at those trends. So we've been collecting data, and Dr. Phillips is going to share with you some of the big trends that we've been seeing up to this point that are going to move us forward. Thank you.
Okay, so as Mr. Poole said, we, the data we received from the schools, we, the school teams that went out to these school meetings took copious amounts and took those note and brought them back to instructional services, kind of compiled them all together, and then took them out and conducted a text analysis on them to try to determine what trends were emerging from those conversations system-wide. We also then provided, you know, how we were going to support each of those schools on those focus areas and areas of need, and turned that back around to the schools as part of that reciprocal accountability that we're promising them through these meetings. From those meetings, we saw several themes arise. So I'm going to go through those relatively quickly here, but please stop me if you have any questions. First and foremost, the theme that came out of all of the focus areas and the areas of need within these schools, or among these schools, was the fact that ELA and math are and continue to be a focus. Specifically, schools talked a lot about implementing the workshop model in ELA and math, acquiring and using instructional coaches, using model classrooms as professional learning venues, and then combating those learning gaps within the subgroups that we've seen throughout our district.
Could you do us a favor and define model classrooms? Because that's very new for us.
Sure, I think I can.
Oh, are you doing that, Van? All right. Good deal.
I don't want to get it wrong. All right. Secondly, we saw that there were concerns system-wide about students in RTI, those kids who aren't achieving as well as they could, students with disabilities, and our English language learners, yes.
Can you define all of those acronyms? Because we have a lot of newbies up here that might not know all of them.
So RTI is Response to Intervention. It is a way to take students who are performing at the lowest levels and in a tiered fashion, bring them up to speed within their grade level. And of course, students with disabilities, that, those are, there are a variety of those sorts of disabilities that are among our students. And then English language learners are those students who don't speak English as their native language. And so we have to provide supports for them throughout their educational experience until they reach the point where they are proficient. So among those students, one of the things that was continually brought up was push-in services. And so to clarify that a little bit, typically speaking, in all of those areas, RTI, students with disabilities, and English language learners, very often, those are pull-out programs, where those students are removed from individual classrooms to a support sort of person who provides them their supports in that area, and then they stick them back in the classroom. One of the things that we're moving toward now is more push-in services, where you're taking the interventionist, the special education teacher, or the ELL teacher, and pushing them in as an additional teacher within the regular ed classroom, so that they can provide those supports within there, within the normal educational environment. Another thing that came up was communication among all those special sorts of educators, the special ed teachers, the RTI teachers, and the general ed teachers. So making sure they're communicating and talking about what the needs of each of those individual students are, and talking about the best ways to address those needs. And then there was also expressed a general need for additional interventionists and English language learner teachers. And I used a different acronym here, so I apologize. We're full of them. ELL and ESOL are the same. So ELL is English Language Learner, and ESOL is English for Speakers of Other Languages. Next was system-wide concerns about student mental health and engagement. Student behaviors were discussed a good bit, specifically in elementary schools. Student engagement is with the new report card, which, exciting, we'll get to talk about later, is becoming more of an issue because of one of the indicators on that report card, student attendance, and the acquisition and use of mental health professionals in the schools. Making sure that we have those trained professionals that can come in and help us deal with some of the mental health issues that we're seeing arising in our schools.
I just want to thank Human Resources. I know they've really been working hard to hire some new psychologists, and I just, I think that's great for every aspect of our school. So thank you for that.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Poole and Mr. Bowers, so they can talk some about their big wins, and how they're going to continue to work.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. We're about to wrap up, but we did want to tell you, we have uncovered a lot of information working with schools this fall and getting kind of really deeply into classrooms and from the lens of the strategic plan, seeing where we're progressing and seeing where the work is going to require more attention and time. The big wins at the secondary level, and I work mostly or exclusively with the middle and high schools and our dual enrollment programs. The school support meetings that I mentioned, when we asked schools to kind of come to a more uniform approach to addressing their data, have been a really big win for us across the system. And we were seeing conversations evolve in just the way collaboration happens with, across our system from the schools. And that collaboration is really now taking the shape of faces and names of students. So we're not talking about what schools need, we're talking about what specific students need. And that's a positive for us that we were hoping would come out of this strategic plan, and we've seen it really emerge. The implementation of instructional models for reading and mathematics, and this isn't an implementation of an initiative, it's a shift to instruction that doesn't rely on sort of a mass understanding. It's really intentional about ensuring touching every child and checking for understanding for every child. And there are strategies that we're helping, or trying to work into schools to help teachers know when a student's not grasping what they need to within a particular content. The professional learning that we've been able to see happening across schools is around things like collective inquiry. So teachers are getting together and moving through inquiry cycles about identifying specific problems and trying strategies, and really developing theories. If we, as a group of teachers, try this strategy, are we going to see different outcomes? And we see that professional learning developing this collective efficacy and impact among teachers. And it's a different kind of learning for us. So that's been a big win in the secondary schools. We're having conversations about why aren't all kids in certain classes? And what can we do to make every child know that every possibility and pathway is open for them? And we're starting to see those conversations turn into enrollments and things like dual enrollment, AP classes, which both enrollments in both of those have increased. And that focus on all students. We're going to talk about some very serious concerns about the new report card system, and certainly we have those concerns. But it does allow us to kind of say, so who's being left behind in our system, either from that data source or other data sources? And really identifying, it's not about getting just enough, like 80, 85% of our kids. It's about who are we not getting and why not? So that's been a conversation that's a big win from this strategic plan from this fall. Continuing to work, the power skill development, we've got such a greater baseline than we kind of thought in this area. It's happening everywhere at every school. We want to get more systematic about it. So how do we measure it? How do we encourage it? How do we grow it and make it a part of the learning? Systematic intervention. So we're intervening on behalf of students, but how do we get that to be much more systematic so that we know we're not missing kids? So we're pretty good at it now, but we can get better, and that's going to be part of our challenge and our work going forward. Continuing to push accelerated coursework, and that's tough. Rigor is tough, and signing up for the hardest classes possible is kind of a hard sell sometimes, but we want kids in relevant rigorous coursework, and we want to push them, and we want to support them in that. So what does it look like to get people in a course and say, I know you've never tried this, this level of courses, but we're with you, and we're going to support your success? And then distributed leadership, Mary Gaskins and her team around leadership development are really talking about what leadership means across our system. And we're seeing that, and we've got to continue that work, because, you know, what would it be like to have like 510 and amplify the number of kind of creative minds working on solution finding across schools for our system? So that's where we're going to continue to charge forward based on what we see right now. And that's kind of the state of secondary. I'm going to hand over to Mr. Bowers, and he's going to let us know about elementary and kind of close it out. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm the last leg here of this presentation, so hopefully we can wrap this up fairly quickly. Big wins at the elementary level. First of all, we have to say that our school support meetings have been a huge success. Seventeen elementary schools, we had teams from central services go out and have these school support meetings. We heard at the direct student-level conversations, and that's what we wanted to hear. We wanted to hear how schools were focusing on the system commitments, and we also wanted to hear how central services could be of benefit and support to the schools. And so our principals feel that that is certainly a huge win for us this fall. What we picked up from those meetings was that we certainly do have an intense focus on ELA and math. And primarily, one thing that we've changed, and I want to get into the model classrooms, but we've taken a new approach to our professional learning in terms of ELA and math. And we, just to break it down in simple terms, we stopped telling teachers how to do the workshop model, now we're showing them. So through this process of having model classrooms, we have these dispersed throughout the district, and our goal is to have one in every single school. But we have highly skilled teachers in the workshop model, and then we send other teachers to go in and view these lessons. We have a briefing with the teachers before they go. We let them know what they're going to see, they go in and view, then we have a debrief. And so then we take that a step further in that we have lab sites throughout our schools as well, where we let the teachers themselves go in, set a goal for themselves, go in and actually practice with students, and then have trained coaches coaching them side by side. And our teachers just rave about this. And we're seeing tremendous results from this kind of professional learning. And we're also moving that into the math as well. We don't have as many model classrooms in math, but we're definitely working in that direction.
I'd like to speak, if I can add. So one of the great flaws of professional learning is that you go to a workshop, say in July, or June even, and then six or eight weeks pass, and you've not practiced it. Well, it's kind of like any skill. If you don't practice it once you learn it, you tend to lose it. And so what then is actually implemented with kids sometimes can be either a watered-down version, or you could see that there could be any kinds of problems with that. So what I love about the model classroom and lab sites specifically, is all of that revolves around students and the teachers' interactions with kids. And that really is a next-level learning experience for our teachers. And I think it speaks to, we have one of our model classrooms, I believe, in Pillion, at Pillion Elementary School. And teachers are lining up to get down there to see this teacher at work. And so it's really exciting that you're walking in and seeing kids in action, you're not talking about this theoretical construct, you're talking about what's actually happening in front of you and its impact on children, and then allowing you to practice and see it and get immediate feedback. So those are all, I think, incredibly important attributes of both the model classroom and the lab sites together. That's really great work.
Right. So definitely, if you speak to any of our teachers about this professional learning, they're going to tell you, we love it, keep it coming. So.
Mr. Bowers, just something I ask, the school support meetings, who participates in that?
Well, the principal and the leadership team there at the school, typically that's the assistant principals, teachers, usually the school psychologists, interventionists, coaches, their leadership team, along with staff from central services. We bring out someone from instruction. So I go to most of the elementary schools. If I don't get there, then Dr. Tally will be there. And then we also have representatives sometimes from special services, or HR, or ESOL. We had meetings with the schools in the summer to kind of gauge who they wanted to come to those meetings, because we're trying to be more personable in terms of delivering on the school's specific needs. So after we have the first meeting, we may adjust that. So the team that goes out to the support meetings may not be the same every time. It depends on the needs of the school. Yes, sir.
I was just going to say, you know, from the 10,000-foot view, again, as we continue to work on teachers' pay, we also need to continue working on that value proposition as a teacher. And again, nothing motivates a teacher more than seeing their child move from A to B. And so the better we can provide them tools and standardize so that they can see that effective change, I think the easier it'll be for us to retain teachers and recruit them as we go into this next hiring season. So I'm just saying thank you.
Yes, sir. So that describes our meaningful professional learning, but I would take that a few steps further in the fact that it's not only meaningful professional learning for the teachers, but we're also giving very meaningful learning to coaches, to our principals, our assistant principals through our Leadership Development Program. Mr. Poole and I coach those principals side by side on various coaching visits throughout the year. We sit down with them, develop goals, we analyze their data resources, we develop goals and strategies to address their learning needs at each individual school.
Mr. Bowers, can I just say, to hear that you coach principals, I think that's just so awesome, because, you know, historically, it's basically, here's the keys, good luck, we'll see you later. I mean, I think that is so valuable to invest in the principals and help them to continue to grow and be, really be deep into this system. I think that really is building that, that structure within getting them, you know, on the same page and able to really implement everything that you're talking about.
Well, everyone appreciates a coaching situation in a, where you have someone side by side, in the moment, working through situations, and it's been very successful. So we certainly appreciate the opportunity for doing that, because that's something we really love. Also, culture at the elementary. Also, culture at the elementary school. We all know that culture, relationships, and we heard from our community and we also heard from the board that character education is something that we, you know, we want to make sure that we have at the forefront. At the elementary level, we have been working on character ed, leadership development for quite some time. We have several of our schools that have already implemented frameworks for this such as Leader in Me, Energy Bus, lifelong skills, lifelong guidelines. We have many programs that do that throughout the district. And so we will continue with that work. The other thing that we heard aloud and clear is the value of mentoring at the elementary level. And our elementary schools have some outstanding mentor programs going on. So anybody that's interested in being a mentor, go out to any of our elementary schools. They would love to have you. Reading buddies, mentors, it's just a wonderful way to be involved in the schools. And then again, as Mr. Poole said, our focus on all students and making sure that we are taking a good, close look at our disproportionate outcomes in terms of student learning and that we sit down and we strategize on how to fix that. As we think about continuing our work at the elementary level, we do have some concerns over behavior. We see students with emotional difficulties, kids that have suffered from trauma that come in and just have a very difficult time adjusting to school. And of course, students with mental health issues. And so we certainly appreciate the work that Mr. Caldwell, Mr. Pender are doing with Project Hope and helping us get mental health professionals in the schools.
So our rates of anxiety and depression are actually, for a first time, actually outpacing ADHD. And so as I meet with insurance companies and we discuss this, they're seeing the exact same thing statewide and even nationally. And so, you know, that kind of identification, teaching, support, those things don't come in the classroom for teachers as they're coming up through their coursework. So what kind of discussions have y'all had regarding ongoing professional development for teachers to help identify, you know, that kid who is suffering toxic stress or, you know, to, what, how does the strategic plan kind of address that?
Well, I would yield to Mr. Caldwell in terms of Project Hope and the things that he's doing there, but I will tell you that at the elementary level, this is something that we're going to have to continue with our work. We're in the preliminary stages of trying to figure out, you know, other than having the mental health professionals to come in and help us, you're correct, we don't have the strategies to do those kinds of things. And we're on a mission to learn and seek help from mental health professionals to help us deal with those sorts of things because all of those issues in terms of anxiety and trauma and mental health are definitely on the rise. So we see what you're seeing at the school level. So, Mr. Caldwell, is anything else you want to add to that?
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. I will say that at this point, we would hope to have hired seven because our goal this year was to hire seven mental health counselors and seven more next year. We would have done that, but the two that we had for the four Pillion schools unfortunately declined our offer. One was related directly to pay. I'm not sure what the other reason was, but as of right now, we have counselors at Gilbert Middle and Gilbert High School. They split Carolina Springs Elementary, Middle, Carolina Springs Middle and Alternative Educational Services. One for White Knoll High School exclusively. One that splits between Saks Gotham and Red Bank Elementary and one between White Knoll Elementary and White Knoll Middle. And it's my understanding that there were interviews held last Thursday and Friday for the two Pillion because there'll be a Pillion Elementary for its pond elementary and a Pillion Middle, Pillion High counselor. And I think they interviewed for those this past week. I don't know the status of that. So to your point, Dr. Gatton, you're right, we're probably not equipped as we should be for our teachers to identify and address. And so we hope that through this agreement with Lexington County Mental Health and with the counselors in our buildings, they will help us identify those issues. And by this time next year, we should have a mental health counselor at least part-time at every one of our sites.
Excellent. So that's definitely something that we will continue with that sort of work. The other things that we're going to continue with is looking for resources for our gifted learners, students that are considered to be gifted. We want to see academic improvement from them as well. You know, they're scoring high, but we want to see that improvement. And so we're going to take a good look at what we're doing with those gifted learners. And then as Mr. Poole said earlier, the strategic interventions, making sure that RTI and special services and ESOL are all in a collaborative effort and that we're streamlining our efforts to support students. So we're going to continue to work in that direction. So just talking with our principals about the strategic plan and asking them to just give us some thoughts about how they view the strategic plan. I thought this one summed it up. This was from Will Moody who is new to our district this year. He's the principal at Gilbert Primary School. So I think that sums it up right there. And I can say from personal experience, I know Mr. Oswald could probably say the same thing. I've been here for 25 years and I know, he was here longer than that, that this strategic plan has a different feel to it. And it gives us a real common language and everybody's focused on it and we talk about it all the time. And so we're just really, really proud of it, proud of the work that we've done. And then moving forward and next steps, we're going to have a meeting in January, once we come back from winter break, of central services staff only. And to my knowledge, we haven't had this sort of meeting before. And we're going to examine before we get into the heat of the budget, how we support our schools. And we have all sorts of information that we haven't had at our fingertips before. And so we certainly, you know, are not making any promises about what we're going to be able to do because, of course, Mr. Butler would tell us, we only have so much money. And it's not all about money, but we need to think about the money that we do have and how we allocate it and how we allocate our personnel, knowing what the schools have told us that they need to get the work done. So that's our next steps.
Well, it sounds like each of the schools are going to have metrics as we move through this plan. So again, we need to focus on central services and what are the expectations and the metrics and how do we define success?
And I'd like to say, so Mr. Bowers and Mr. Poole, both, you talked about how you're looking at individual students, names and faces. And, you know, we're in a district that's over 26,000 students now. We're growing. And so to hear that our focus is, you know, addressing the needs of individual students, you know, it's perfectly fine for our buildings to have a prototype, but children, you don't have a prototype for children. That diminishes the product rather than improving the efficiency. And so I'm so glad to hear that that is such a part of how this strategic plan is being operationalized. I think that's so important.
So again, 14 months ago, we talked about, I made a promise to the board that the strategic plan would not sit on a shelf. And it's not. It's not going to just look good on the website. It's not going to collect dust on the shelf. We're going to work hard at it. And our goal is not, it's about moving forward and you're going to see there are some things that we don't do as well as others. And that's why we have the plan in front of us to continue to make that forward progress even when we're not doing well in something so that we can talk about it, we can plan, we can, you know, drop back and then move forward again. And so we're very excited about the plan, as you can tell. There's a lot going on and we're going to continue to work hard at it. But I would like to take just a second, thank you three very much again. This is a wonderful presentation about where we are. It's a lot of work and they put that together pretty quickly overall. And we will be providing another progress report in, it's going to be March, and then we'll do another one, I believe, in May or June, right? So we've got two more scheduled for next semester. So lots of, lots of information coming.
Well, and the challenge of a three-year strategic plan is that by June, we'll be almost a third of the way through the three years.
That's correct.
So, I mean, really, it is, you're running fast.
We have to be nimble, that's the idea. And so speaking of the strategic plan, so this actually worked out really well for us because the report cards, I wanted to do the strategic plan first so that you could have some context about how we are approaching progress on the report cards as well. And I think you're going to see that what we need to work on in our report cards are really aligned already in our strategic plan, which is really good planning for the district. So, Dr. Phillips, and we're also going to talk about, I believe, some concerns that we have with some of the calculations. As a former president said, I believe fuzzy math was the word, and we're going to talk a little bit about that as well.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Little, thank you. I am going to talk briefly tonight about the school report cards that were recently released. Just for those of you who are new to us, let me, I'm going to kind of recap a few things and kind of bring you up to speed on the timeline. On October 12th, the State Department released an embargoed report card for us to review. And we had until October 25th to conduct that review with a public release scheduled for November 15th. So during that time, between October 12th and November 12th, a lot of people, particularly people in my position in districts around the state, found a variety of problems. And there were lots of them. But here were some of the bigger concerns. There were questions about the student progress metric, that way that they're measuring student growth. There were issues with the metric that they're calling school quality, which was based off of a student engagement survey given to all students in April, May-ish last year. There were various inconsistencies in data that was reported on the report card, not necessarily rated, but reported. And that included things like teachers, the number of certified teachers in schools and the way that discipline was being reported, those kinds of things. Also, the use of our formative assessment data on a summative report card. And they also were calculating graduation rate points incorrectly based on what was written in the Education Oversight Committee's Accountability Manual. And there were a laundry list of other things that came up here and there. But the folks around the district found those concerns. And then on November 12th, at the, in response to a lot of the emails and calls and things that the State Department was getting from folks around the state, they delayed that release. And they delayed it until November 29th. They reopened the review and then we went back to looking at it and seeing if we could make sure that those problems were fixed. Different roundtable groups, the Testing and Accountability Roundtable, the Superintendent's Roundtable, Instructional Leaders Roundtable, all met and provided feedback to the State Department and Education Oversight Committee about the issues that they found in the report card. They made an effort to fix them and then on November 29th, those report cards were released. So many of you on this board have seen this. For those of you who haven't, this is kind of how the points were distributed. So you had academic achievement, which was ELA and math. Preparing for success was student achievement on science and social studies. And these are based, this one was based off of SC Ready for elementary and middle schools. And this one was based off of SC Pass for elementary and middle schools. This one was based off of Algebra I and English I and of course tests for high schools and Biology I and U.S. History and of course tests for high schools here. Student progress was a measure of growth on ELA and math from one year to the next. And this is sort of a point of contention that we can talk about in a little bit later. School quality was that student engagement survey. English learner's progress toward proficiency. This was those ELL learners that we were talking about earlier. They had to show certain amounts of growth toward being deemed proficient in the English language in order to get points on that. Graduation rate is exactly what it sounds like. And then college and career readiness is based off of a variety of metrics that can be included to count a child as college and career ready. Something to note, I mean, with all the talk in legislature about the potential reduction of state testing and mandatory testing, you'll note that at the elementary and middle level, about 90% of these metrics are based off of standardized tests. And at the high school level, 70% are based off of standardized tests. So just think about that for a little bit, if they're going to reduce it. Each school was rated based on a point system, 100-point system, and they were given a rating of excellent, good, average, below average, or unsatisfactory. Okay? So the way that these ratings were determined was they looked back at the 2015 National Assessment for Educational Progress for South Carolina in reading and math. And they tried to align the percent, for this year only, the percent of schools, excellent and good, to that percent proficient and advanced on that NAEP test, the average to the basic, and the below average to the unsatisfactory. Uh, to, I'm sorry, below average and unsatisfactory to the below basic.
The NAEP test is the one that's given to a random sample, right?
It's given to a random sample at different grades each year. We do tend to get randomly sampled quite a bit. But, and it's different subjects in different years and sometimes they do a real hard focus on math and science, but this was the one they opted to use for this. And again, I say this is for this year only because they're taking whatever this top 15% was this year and making whatever the lowest score of those schools was the cut point for now, for the next three to five years. And so likewise for each of those other levels. So as it stands this year, 15% of schools in the state are excellent, 20% are good, 35% are average, 20% are below average, and 10% are unsatisfactory. In Lexington One, this is how we fared. We had seven schools come out as excellent, which is a quarter of our schools. 28.6% or eight schools came out good, 10 schools came out average, that's 35, almost 36%, two schools were below average, and one school was unsatisfactory. So we continue to have some concerns about the report card. And, you know, it's very important that we talk about these concerns because when we're making these decisions about the strategic plan, we need to make sure that we're basing those conversations and any decisions we make on good data that is a good metric of our success or lack of success. So the first concern we have, they called that student engagement survey the, a measure of school quality. All right? So it is what's called a competitive metric. So a competitive metric means that they take all of the schools and they were looking at the percent of students who scored committed, which in short means the kids like to come to school, want to come to school, and are engaged while they're there. Okay? They took all of those percent committed and they ranked them from best to worst. And then they created percentiles out of that and certain percentile became a certain amount of points. So the way this- So the way this worked out was you could have well over half of your students scoring committed and be unsatisfactory. Okay? So you're, instead of competing against a, a benchmark, so for example, if you said, "Well, if you're less than 30% committed, we're going to call that unsatisfactory because, you know, only a third of your kids are committed," they're saying, "Well, your, your score is not as good as this school up here. Even though well more, well over half of your kids are, are engaged in the learning, you're still unsatisfactory." So we have a problem with that metric. Secondly, the growth measure, the way it is constructed, makes it difficult for high-achieving schools to, to achieve growth. It also is a little bit of a moving target in, in such a way that you can actually demonstrate growth but still lose points. And so, you know, we're talking some about this with the State Department and about how that seems to disadvantage certain schools. Third, the overall point system, the 100-point system, is, is structured so that it is almost impossible for any school to achieve all points. And as we mentioned before, there is very much an over-reliance on standardized testing. There's one portion of this report card, the college and career readiness measure, which allows a student a variety of ways to achieve that measure. So when we talk about that profile of a South Carolina graduate that talks about multiple pathways and talks about demonstrating those sort of important power skills, this is the one sort of, to me, bright spot of this report card in that a kid can reach that by taking a test or doing a work-based learning experience or receiving a certification from LTC. Variety of different ways that they can achieve that. Everything else is based at least in some fashion on a standardized test. So moving forward, while we don't agree with everything that the, that the report card shows us, we do have it as a baseline. And like any other piece of data, we use that piece of data along with other pieces of data to help us guide our decisions and our conversations. And from these data and from the data that we've collected around the, the district in a variety of other ways, we know that we have a couple of, of pretty good-sized needs. We want to look at middle school performance for all of our middle schools and look at those structures and the, the way we're, we're structuring time, space, and place for those schools and, and see if we can't get better performance out of that. And then also, district-wide, we want to look at how are we moving kids? How are we addressing those needs of each individual kid so that they're moving forward? And so that we can address that growth piece.
Was the middle school opportunity for us more the absolute performance or the relative growth compared to other middle school students in other districts?
It was growth that was, that was our killer on that one. Our achievement was, was average to above average and good on, on all of our middle schools, pretty much, but the growth was the one thing.
Could that be because our current middle schoolers are the ones that were part of this, experienced several different tests? I mean, because they were.
That could be for everybody, right?
Yeah, one of the things we are, in fact, I'm looking at Dr. Tally, but Mr. Poole and I have had this conversation. We're going to really look at fundamentally some of the structural changes, some possible changes to our middle school schedule. We have some concerns about the length of the class periods. We have concerns just about some overall schedule pieces that we're going to have conversations about. You know, I don't want to make any promises here in an open meeting when we haven't had the in-depth conversations because we've really spent the last few weeks breaking down what this looks like to give us some, give us some movement forward. But we will be spending large portions of the spring semester talking about the lessons that we can learn because we look at this as a continuous improvement process. No matter how good we are, we can always get better, and this is certainly part of what we're going to be working on.
Okay, so I'll, I'll answer any further questions you guys have.
Well, I want to say one thing I'm pleased with is that Dr. Little has a middle school background.
I do, yes.
So that's going to be a plus for us as we move forward on figuring this out.
Middle school is, is a passion of mine, so it's good to, it's good to see that we're going to be working on that.
And I'm happy to say I have one semester left in middle school, so. It's a fun time.
Thank y'all for all your.
Yeah, thank you.
So again, I apologize for the lateness of the hour, but those were two major things or three major things we had to take a look at. Dr. Tally, I believe you have some first reads to just let us know about?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Little. I am tonight bringing to the board's attention for first reading, policy IHBA, Special Education Programs for Handicapped Disabled Students. This is a policy that needs to be recodified because of new legislation that, that was put into play last, last year, to offer a state-recognized employability credential for certain students with disabilities for whom such a credential is appropriate. I see Dr. Powers shaking his head. This is long time overdue.
Yeah, it's great.
Our special ed department has spent a lot of time advising the state on, on this work and on what we would do in Lexington I to make it viable for our students. I've included also in your packet the components and the criteria that would establish this program for our students. And also I've included a listing of courses that we would offer, and it's no, it should be no surprise to you, we're a little bit ahead of the game. We offer occupational programs in, in the past, and we'll just be tweaking those a little bit. So if you would very carefully, I'm speaking particularly to the new board members, the way this works, if you would very carefully, and the former board members too, you know, to read this with a fine-tooth comb, if you have any questions before January board meeting, please give me a call or shoot me an email. I'd be happy to answer your questions. When we come back in January, I'll be seeking approval on, on, on this policy. Happy to answer any questions.
And then correct me if I'm wrong, but we want to make the corrections between the two such that when we come back in January, the revisions are.
That's right. What I've done, the text in red are our changes. And you'll see some, the rag is all in red because it's new, but the policy just has some red text.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Tally, and thank you, Dr. Little. Though both of those policies and that administrative rule are exciting. I, we had the, we were fortunate when we were holding our meetings about the bond referendum, we had a parent tell us about the education her child got at one of our high schools, and it actually helped him get a job. I mean, she, she brought tears to her eyes telling about that her son had employment and he was a child in this program. So it's real exciting work y'all are doing. Board items 13.0, or items for board information only. 14.0 is we are going to adjourn this open session. So do I hear a motion to adjourn open session?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Is there any questions or comments regarding the open session? I'm going to call on Dr. Powers. When we were recognizing the cafeteria staff, he got numbers, and I don't want him to share those numbers and put those in the minutes, so.
All right. So I've reached out to some of our leadership team to ask about how many meals. So we serve 18,000 meals per day on average. So for 180-day school, school year, that means we serve 3,254,000 meals per year. So it'd be interesting to put that up against Bojangles and Leger's Thicket and, you know, places we all eat at in this room, and see how many meals they serve a year anyhow.
But we've recognized that staff and those numbers just, oh my goodness, that's a lot of cooking. Thank you, Dr. Powers. Anyway, are there any other questions or comments regarding open session? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of closing out the open session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and it is, everyone's in favor. At this time, I would like to call to order a second executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair, I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of receipt of legal advice concerning a pending claim.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. I would like to remind the board that Ms. Garris has submitted a written recusal from this discussion that is filed in previous minutes, and we will use that again to file this for this particular executive session. So at this time, we will step to the boardroom and have executive session, and then we will come back out at some time in the future and adjourn executive session. There will be no action taken tonight. This is strictly for board information, so there will be no voting past this point. So thank y'all and have a wonderful, wonderful holiday. So, thank y'all, and have a wonderful, wonderful holiday.
Board, uh, we have concluded the, uh, executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn executive session? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Green. Is there any discussion regarding the, uh, closure of executive session? Turning on, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, it's unanimous, and may we discuss?
And let's see how much it's just in January.
Merry Christmas.
I love your, I love your smiles and your smiles.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, y'all.
Merry Christmas.